The next slide of the board of council is City Initiative Res zoning Petition 13-07. The city is quite, is probably located at Southeast Corner, 29th Avenue Drive in Northeast, and 16th Street Northeast to be rezoned from Neighborhood Commercial NC to medium density residential R3. Hickory by Choice 2030 classifies the vicinity as neighborhood mixed use. The rezoning of these properties to medium density residential R3 is consistent with the Neighborhood Mixed Use Future Land Use classification. And again, this is a mapping error made back in 2011, two years ago, that we're trying to correct this evening. You can see the future land use of the area, the property outlined in red. You can see the property here, outline of the area north of. And this is the property here. You can see the Neighborhood Commercial, PD, the various residential districts, as well as industrial and O and I. Again, the property had been zoned prior to 2011 as residential. Property's currently vacant. Just trying to request this mapping error be rectified. Back on January 23rd, the commission, planning commission met and unanimously voted for a recommendation for the map correction and the rezoning to Hickory City Council. And staff concur to the planning commission's decision. If you have any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the chair of the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak for this proposal. I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Aye.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mr. Seibert. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Okay, the last rezoning petition I have before you this evening, rezoning petition 13-08. See the property in question here. Springs Road, Northeast. Venture Properties 7 LLC requests rezoning of 1.675 acres of property located at 2633 Springs Road, Northeast. The area rezoned is a portion of a larger tract of property, which you can see here in the 2010 aerial, outlined again in red. This is Springs Road, Northeast, heading northward. See the wooded lot. It's all one large property, residential back here. You can, right here, see Shells Barbecue. You can see the medical offices, optometry office here. This is the renovated, recently renovated Burger King Commercial Mixed Use Industrial Development Cross Street. This is the Galaxy Shopping Center. Again, the area for the rezoning is the larger tract of property. This property will be subdivided in the future. We've already received the subdivision plaque. The request is to rezone the rear of the property from medium density residential R2 to commercial corridor CC2. The entire frontage of the property is currently CC2, as you can tell in the pink color. And there's the R2 residential becoming, again, Springs Road. The rezoning of the property to CC2 is consistent with the commercial corridor. And the particular rezoning, again, is request to provide additional area for a proposed new retail building that will be located there in the near future. Back in January, the planning commission held the hearing to consider the matter. Hearing two individuals spoke in favor of the petition, while no one spoke in opposition to the petition. Planning commission unanimously voted to forward a recommendation of approval to Hickory City Council. And staff concurs with the findings and the recommendation to rezone this property this evening. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the chair of the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak in this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? This is Mr. Shay Davis, Venture Properties, Wilkes-Barre, North Carolina.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm basically here to just answer the questions you might have about the project. If you don't have any, I'll take up the new old town. It's not very busy now. If you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them. I'll do my best.
Does anyone have any questions?
What's the future for this piece of property?
We have a commercial property going there. It's called a DGP Dollar General Plus. It's a larger Dollar General prototype. Currently located just down the street. They might have decided they need to maintain product or adhere to sales. So we'll be driving, they will larger shore, more product, be more groceries, build more upscale than they want.
They currently own the facility there right now.
Certainly so.
You know what it's going to be trying to do.
I've always known that property.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you. Making yourself available by coming down.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this proposal? I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Please approve.
We got a motion by Mr. Lael, I think it was Mr. Giff, and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
First department report this evening, I'll ask consistency, the manager, Andy Surratt, and the president, they request for a change to the city's vacant building director.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mr. Barry and Mr. Corona. I'm here tonight to present to you some opportunities to change the guidelines that you've adopted over the last few years for the vacant buildings grants. And we're trying to look at this grant every year and we try to anticipate ways to improve the grant based upon its performance and ability for the business owners in the area to access the grant. And we want to be sure that we are offering a grant that targets older mill buildings for redevelopment. And so that's, we want to continue to make improvements upon that. And so I'll just go back through, just a quick summary of inventory that we have of vacant buildings in Hickory. So 432 total vacant buildings of that, 200, or about half are standalone, and the other half are multi-tenant building spaces. So for a total of 3 million square feet, you know, which, you know, on average takes you to about 7,000 square feet per site, but of course those obviously vary greatly. So with that, then of the 200 standalone that are over 10,000 square feet, which is what the grant targets, we have 87 of those. And 24% of those buildings have been vacant since September 2007 when we first began the inventory. So, you know, we are really trying to zero in on the vacant standalone buildings greater than 10,000 square feet. And we have, over the years, kept a map and a journal of where those sites are. And the map in blue indicates where the majority of those building sites are. And it's hard to see, but there are red dots which indicate where those vacant buildings are. But they're still scattered across the city. So, you know, so if you remember the different older neighborhoods, there may be a nice mill building tucked in in the Newmont area, or around LR, or out further into the southwest area. And we want, even though the map doesn't capture those, we're trying to make sure that the grant allows those to be considered. And so, just as a summary of what we've done with the grants, we've had nine grants in 2009, which was really about our first year with the program. We did two grants in 2010. One, you know, one of the issues is, at what point does a, does a grant not get issued because a property has been left into disrepair and code enforcement action is necessary? So that's what happened with the LTO site, which eventually became a teardown and then went back up as, one of those sites. And then no grants in 2011, because we suspended the program for a year to sort of try to understand where, what our target market is. We did one grant for Holler Posery last year because of some things that changed with the grant, started to make those project requests available to only more larger projects. And then finally tonight, on second reading, you approved a grant, the first one of the year, for demolition out on Highway 70. So that's the first one of 2013. In addition, we've had the county to help us with some, the landfill waiver program. So just to highlight it to there about that, that program, two acres in size and in an area slated for future redevelopment. And so we worked with the EDC on that. And so that's helped pair up a project in a larger scale with not only our vacant building grant, but also the landfill waiver. And so tonight, we're bringing to you some suggested changes because as we've had the Business Development Committee meet over the last year and consider these grants, we've noticed that there's some roadblocks to success on, on some grant applications. So Alan Jackson and Ryan Laverne are here. They have had been a part of a conversation about what to do to improve the potential. One is just with the sites that are outside the blue area, we want to say that if they are high priority brownfield sites, then they can be considered. Well, sometimes that isn't always what we know as a fact. In some cases, the right terminology should be suspect, so that a project can then go through a process of a phase one or phase two to find out if they're brownfield sites. And so we didn't want that to be a limitation. And then we added, or suggesting to add some language there. Other former mill or industrial buildings may be considered eligible if the redevelopment of those will contribute to the revitalization of the surrounding neighborhood as determined by the planning director. So what this does is it gives our staff some flexibility to bring a project to the Business Development Committee that is outside the area, that has qualities such as greater than 10,000 square feet, you know, a redevelopment site that's, that's key to the success of changing a neighborhood. And so we feel like we've had enough experience already with the grant to know where those are and where they are not, and be able to bring some discretion to that and bring the projects to the EDC. And then with that change comes also maybe just an adjustment downward of the amount of dollars expected for an applicant to spend on their project as their portion of investment. And the reason we adjust this down slightly is because right now with the projects that, that must spend 75,000 or greater, we, we have a limited number of those applications coming through. We have sort of a, it's sort of tries to speak to the gap of, of projects that are smaller that might not spend 75,000, and drop that down so that they become eligible as well. And then again, changing just the ratio of what's spent on the exterior as well, going from 30,000 to 10,000, because we just have projects that may have the ability to be funded if they fall into this category. And the last piece is just making sure that all of those grant applications have a phase one done for the project, just ensuring that that gets done before council approves it. And so those are the changes that we were presenting tonight. But the, the Business Development Committee is hearing from applicants and staffs hearing from applicants that there's still some other areas to think about change in. And I just wanted to speak to those tonight and say in the future, staff may be bringing back to you a few more additions. And some of that comes from just some feedback we're getting. One is the grant process is too long. We hear, we hear that from applicants. And, you know, we understand that government has a certain set of processes and approvals, and we're not asking to change the process going through city council at all. But, but we'd like to look into how to let the projects go ahead and start construction if they are willing to take the risk of not getting the grant and start it sooner, and then come through the city council approval process. But you know, it does require an applicant to make application, go to the Business Development Committee, come to the council first reading, come to city council second reading. And by then, with the addition of getting the bids themselves for the work, it's really about two and a half and potentially three months from the time they decide that they're ready to go until they get an approval. And sometimes these projects are in fury and they've got a tenant, and we're just trying to be responsive to that. Another idea that we might look at for the future and come back another time is just to think about the, the level of eligible project costs. So right now, it's, it's been set at a, at a minimum of 15% of the project, or 30,000, whichever is less. And so if we raise that, then we capture, we give a little bit more to the projects that are in that smaller size and can afford less, but then still can make a difference in the community. The last piece is just looking at, is there, is there any advantage to reducing the minimum square footage from 10,000 to some number smaller to capture some of the vacant spaces that are in the downtown? Some fall into the 10,000 and some don't. And there's not any renovation dollars available to partner with anyone looking at the downtown. So we're back, we're just talking about that as well. And so with that, I'd just like to see if you have any questions or would you consider the changes, the suggested changes underlying tonight as a chance. And we have some projects sort of waiting in the wings, if this is something that you are interested in.
I appreciate your considerations. I've always, developers come to me all the time, all the time, because time is money for someone who's developing. And I really applaud the Business Development Council for their insight in allowing the planning director to have that authority, because I think that's, that's really going to help.
I think they need flexibility. They need flexibility to meet the changing landscape out there and also be moved from just the revitalization areas that there are, areas in Hickory that need that and we need that flexibility. We can't do the ballot, but we can certainly pave the way to make it easier for people to come in and vote.
You said, I'm sorry. You said you'd, you'd heard from applicants. Are we getting a lot of applicants? And if they're not meeting the thing, we approved one last year, 2012. How many, I mean, would you talk, keep talking about applicants?
Right. There, I mean, there've been some, some.
Several.
Three, four, five.
I'd say that it's been at least half a dozen.
Half a dozen, yeah. For one reason or another. Now, they're either outside the area, you know, for, for time purposes, maybe they, yeah, because they haven't been able to get through the grant process. But it didn't work, the, the process itself didn't work for their project for one or more reasons. We're trying to figure out what all those are.
Since we began this a few years ago, how many properties have we recycled that were vacant?
You know, one of the, I mean, definitely 12 sites. And actually, if you think about all the work that HPD Code Enforcement has done for demolitions and just code enforcement itself, approving the, you know, paying rent of life, there's only been a number of projects that have gone that.
All of that creates interest.
Yes, that's right. And so we've just got to keep creating that interest. And thank goodness, there are people out there that would like to renovate these mill buildings or the older industrial spaces.
And that might fuck up a few tiny areas. You know, because the cold is raining and things, and people aren't going to hesitate to jump in.
We're continuing this, is there?
No, there's actually a recommendation to make a change to the.
Okay, moving on to the other considerations, that, those are being handled today, right?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Giff, second by Ms. Patton. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And I think once again, Mr. May, I think we've done something that's a little bit more business friendly than other things we've done this.
Can I, can we clarify? We're not doing anything that's not business friendly, should than other things we've been doing. So I say that, just want to make sure. We, we very much want to be friendly.
You can play back the tape.
Yeah, right, right.
I have believed all along, we are very business friendly, but there are times when you can improve even all that. And I hope this is improved all the way.
Next department report, I'll take care of. In response to council discussion and direction regarding public comments in council meetings, staff recommended the following changes. You, you have two documents that govern that currently. The first one is Section 255B of Hickory City Code Ordinance. This is the second is Council Policy Number 0506, Public Address to Council. What staff recommends is that Section 255B, which encapsulates, among other things, the actual order of your agenda, that it be modified to move public comment, which currently, or first request. Which is currently item 12 on your agenda, that it be moved to item 5. You could put it in position right after special presentations. Now, special presentations are not always on your agenda. That's what makes them special, I suppose. I don't, you never take action in a special presentation. And I think part of the discussion was to get public input prior to city council action. So that change to Section 255B would accommodate that. And we also are going to suggest cleaning up one other thing that has been on Section 255B historically, but we have not used at least in the 80, 90s I've been here, which was a number seven unfinished business. And actually, special items was not in that section either, although we typically put them on there from time to time. So we are suggesting that you go ahead and add special presentations so it's formally there, and that you delete item seven unfinished business since it's never used. Then the next piece is to clean up your policy 0506, Public Address to City Council, just to be consistent now with what you have on the agenda, or what you would have on the agenda if you approved that recommended change. And what that does in basic terms is, that policy was basically trying to get at items on the agenda that the public wanted to talk about and items not on the agenda that the public wanted to talk about, and deal with those almost as two separate issues. If you take the action to move the public comment or people requesting to be heard to item four on the agenda, then you don't need to try to distinguish between what people are wanting to speak on. They can speak on an item on the agenda or an item not on the agenda, or whatever they'd like to address to council all at that same time. And again, it is before the item and for any other action that council would take. And so the policy simply cleans that up. And just as I'm sitting here looking at this draft of policy, I actually had addressed the council as item number four on the council policy 0506, and actually this would be item number five. So we make that typo change out of that. So that's staff's recommendation in terms of how to accommodate persons requesting to be heard at city council meetings. The other procedures that are laid out in that policy stay the same except for the deletion of number six, which again, got into dealing with items on the agenda or not on the agenda. And that whole issue now goes away because the time is at the beginning of the agenda for people to speak. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Did we also eliminate or scramble the agenda to allow persons to speak once again?
Yes. You would have one time for people to speak. It would be at the beginning of agenda in that item number five slot. So just, yeah, so I need you actually to take two actions. You need to approve ordinance number 1316, which amends Section 255, which has the agenda item, and that's Exhibit XVII.
I'm approving the ordinance 13-16.
Motion by Mr. Lael, second by Ms. Patton. Fox, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
And then the second is to approve amended council policy number 0506. And I'm going to go ahead and again state that in the background section, it needs to say city council under item five, and number number five, not number number four.
I approve.
Second. This is what happens when you have a city manager doing this stuff at his computer instead of the city attorney. It actually also needs to say Section 255B5, and I've got 255B9, no, yeah, sorry. So just.
I approve. Right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
The next department report, I'll ask Chief Atkins to come to the podium and preview with city council some of the thoughts and community input that HPD wants to initiate regarding youth protection.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Mr. Mayor, Council Number 30, Mr. Corona. So I stand for you the purpose of introducing you to the proposed youth protection ordinance that we, City Police Department and Deputy City Attorney, Mayadula, prepared. We want to take that proposed city ordinance out on the road. Basically, we want to take it to different venues to engage community dialogue and to see what the feeling, what the thoughts are about a youth protection ordinance. Also, during this next month or so, before we bring the ordinance back to you for consideration with any modifications that be made, we're also going to talk to other jurisdictions around the state that have youth protection ordinance and see what has worked for them, what has not, and try to bring back a more clean, more usable city ordinance that will protect our youth and our community. I had the fortune pleasure of being raised in Hickory. In my small town in Ohio, the fire whistle would go off at a certain time at night, and that's when all the youth had to be in. And after that time, police officers could take enforcement actions. Also, some tell me that when the streetlights go off, that's when you need to, or streetlights come on, that's when you need to be home. Also, we had the pleasure back in the 70s, I'm told, in the mid 70s all the way to the mid, late 80s. I think Manny Pitts was part of this. mid-to-late eighties, and I think Manny Pitts was part of this process, but Officer P. Fowler, if you know P. Fowler, if P. Fowler found you out late at night, he would snatch you up, take you to your parents' house, maybe give you some disciplinary action there, or the parents may authorize him to give you some disciplinary action, and that would solve the problem. Although it's time to change, and look where Manny Pitts is today. Obviously, there's times to change over those, over that period. Hickory's grown, probably 25,000 square miles have grown. Children have young ages, get cell phones, where parents can call them, and they can converse back and forth and kind of track where they are. But also, there's more opportunities, more distractions, more negative influence that our children can be subject to. So the youth protection ordinance is basically what it sounds, or what it says, is to protect our juveniles, not as a criminal component of it, but as a, remove them from victimization of the opportunities out there. These young folks out there, obviously with some influence, can go the wrong direction, go the wrong path. So having this ordinance in place might reduce that likelihood of our young people being involved in some type of criminal activity, but most importantly, being a victim of crime. It also will give our police officers legal authority, or strengthen our legal authorities to take custody of a child under the age of 16. Right now, we do it on extreme circumstances. If we find a child out late at night in a compromising position, or a position where it's not beneficial for them, we do take custody, call their parents and bring, and have them come pick them up, or if we have no access, obviously take custody and then try to find a relative. But this would give them more legal authority, better legal authority to do that. The time restriction that we're looking at, obviously, there's a draft ordinance out there that the city attorney, Deputy City Attorney, and Arne Adula prepared, sort of those foundations where it worked from for our presentations. But right now, as it stands, the proposed ordinance, in small actor, some other ordinances around the state, but the time restriction would be any day of the week, 10:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m., for the following day for ages under the age of 12. So that's anybody probably under the age, or under the seventh grade or below age of 12, would need to be out of public, or with a parent or guardian in public, at, before, or up to the time of 10:00 p.m. Any day of the week, 11 o'clock for anybody with the age of 13, 14, and 15. So that's your junior high folks, that's your freshman, maybe sophomore, individuals, children out there. The penalties basically would be, we could declare or write a report, turn over the juvenile authorities declaring that child delinquent or undisciplined, and let the courts take action, or they will do juvenile justice system will take action, how to impose any type of sanctions against that juvenile. But the main thing is hold the parents accountable. Parents would be required, or would be subject to a fine of up to $200, and be part of a misdemeanor charge, so they need to get a misdemeanor charge in District Court or a civil penalty. Some of the areas that we were finding our juveniles out and about in our, at special events throughout the city, we're finding them out on Highway 70 on the weekends, we're finding them hanging out in public areas, maybe being dropped off, at mall, movie theater, whatever it may be, and just being subject to any outside influence. And we also like to get them before they do engage in criminal activity. One recent instance where, within the last couple months, we've had a 16-year-old and 215-year-olds out at 3:00 in the morning. Unfortunately, they chose the path of breaking into vehicles, HPD was able to catch those folks in the act, but there again, we've got 16-year-old, 215-year-old running around at 3:00 in the morning. Other jurisdictions that we know that have imposed some type of youth protection ordinance, Chapel Hill, Carolina Beach, Charlotte, New Bern, Rock Mountain, and Jacksonville, all have some type of youth protection ordinance. There's others out there, that's part of the research, and the next month or so, Deputy City Attorney, Adula and I, will be out doing public input, seeking other outside information. Where we do this neighborhood, or the input, getting input from our citizens, would be our neighborhood groups, looking at going to both Hickory Public and Toba County School Boards, prospect PTAs at different schools, any civic groups, seeking direction from our juvenile justice staff at 25th District, HCPA, and other venues where we can get some influence, where we can get some positive feedback, or some feedback that will help shape this ordinance, bring it back to you. So with that, I'll ask for any questions.
How many neighborhood venues were you planning to go to?
Just anyone's available, all of our neighborhood groups, those are probably definite, any civic groups that would have any, rugby clubs and such, but PTA, if we can get into PTA, board our meetings with the schools. I've already talked to a board member for Toba County Schools, and obviously Hickory Public Schools with Dr. Hart, so very interested in working with HPD, so I think that's another venue, get some input or get some feedback from the school board. You counsel a big old, you counsel good.
That sounds great. I just wonder if we should also supplement that with, I don't know, with meetings where we actually advertise, we make sure that people would not be able to say they overlooked an opportunity to attend one of these meetings.
I guess we can advertise the neighborhood.
And I'm not talking about dozens and dozens.
No, 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 I understand.
But one or two, so we could say, well, we advertised, what else can we do?
Sure.
And first, we could run this, we could run this information on the government channel. I would just like as many parents
Sure.
...to have input both ways as we can get. We want to protect the, protect our young people, and at the same time, we want to protect the freedom of the parents and the young people, so I'd like to see, I'd like to see a situation where they could not say they just opened the...
Probably the best way to do that is a little note sent on to your kids in school. That's where I got most of my information.
Mine never did.
You already did. Most time, they know if it's good news or bad news, you know, yes, that's where they get it out of. But I'd say for school events, those times you talked about pretty much
Well, if they're...
...would be beyond what a school would be.
Right, and if they're engaged in some type of school function, and their definition throughout this ordinance that talks about engaging in school activity, if they're engaged in working, having some type of work permit, they're taking beyond. The thing is, is once they lead that activity, they take the most direct route, not...
Well, I've heard you do it with younger ages at certain times, so they definitely shift, like the elementary, middle school shift, and work high school shift.
There's this whole piece of waiting for rides to, I mean, church, the movie theater.
And I don't think HPD's going to rush out there on much of the watch block, and it just gives us another lack of, a tool in toolbox, if we need to enforce this. I don't think we're going to be rushing out there to enforce this, there again, generates some other things we've got to go through and get ourselves in the court system, but I think it gives us an opportunity, if we do find somebody out at 3:00 in the morning who's 15 years age, something's broken, something's...
There's some parents who welcome this curfew being in place.
I really enjoyed that, when my son got the driver license, that after that 9:00 curfew, that he could not drive at 9:00, I really enjoyed that, I was trying to get that to age 21.
Well, I think you're on the right track, in my opinion. I just want to raise your parents, that we don't have these venues where people say we have 10 minutes.
Right.
That's okay, but let's also have venues where we can take as many comments as people want, questions, comments, input that people want to ask. Any other comments? Move forward, sir.
Thank you, Austin. Thank you.
Well, I see this kid, Taze, happy about that, because he probably ended up with some kids on the streets after events, right?
Final department report, I'll report to council, and then we call on staff to provide additional information, but it's your October 16th, 2012, we, city council directed staff to explore options of video recording in city council meetings. I believe one time since then, we've been approved of updates. In basic terms, what we have found, as we have looked at this, well, let me back up just a second, and say that we came at this from the standpoint of wanting to produce quality of video presentation, obviously, in this day and age, you can have a flip phone and open it up and videotape something. We felt like we wanted to do something that was high quality. I was in a, had the opportunity to see a video of a council, actually a county commission meeting, where a good friend of mine is the county manager, and I will tell you that I was just appalled at the quality. I mean, it was very dark, you could hardly see the people, you could barely hear them, people walking in front of the camera, and it just sent, it just sent a really bad message, in my opinion. If I didn't know anything about that, to me, I think, wow, that's not a very open coming place. So I directed staff to take a hard look at what it would mean to have a quality presentation that's consistent with the brand that we're presenting. As they've done that, as often happens with what you think would be a simple idea, it becomes more complicated, more expensive. We found out that our audio system, which has some problems, especially at that podium, and also with some mics that don't pick up if you're not leaning forward like I am, speaking into them, we don't have the, we don't even have the ability with this system to plug it into a video camera, so that has to be taken care of, or you get all kinds of audio problems. We've learned that it's better to have a mic on, mic off situation, so you get better quality of audio. We also had folks who do this come in and look at our facility, and say that our lighting was not adequate, and that this background behind you was going to be problematic. We also have not gotten a solution yet, but we were concerned about presentations, obviously, you have lots of presentations, you have them tonight. There are ways that those presentations can affect, be sliced into the video, for lack of a better term, so that you have a nice, you can see the presentation clearly while you're hearing the speaker, and then go back to the video, the speaker, et cetera. So the long and short of it is, we still have some more detailed work to do on some of those solutions, but we're at the point that we know the range, the cost of doing a quality video presentation would be somewhere between $12,000 and $20,000. That certainly gets beyond what I had originally thought the cost of do this. There's a wide range in terms of what people would charge to actually come and video the meeting, so we could find something, I think, reasonable there. We were told we could do it for $200 a meeting, we were told it costs $2,600 a meeting, so obviously, there's some latitude there. So after conversations with staff this past week, I thought that what would make sense is to plan forward the budget like we do with major expenditures. That will also give us some time to make sure that we're doing it right, and we're not rushing to get an end product, that a year later, we realize we didn't do it as well as we should have. So that will get staff a little bit of time and to program into just the workload of our own staff, some of the issues with the lighting, make sure we get the right audio equipment, et cetera. But maybe I would offer as an interim solution, in terms of just the public access to this meeting, obviously, already, we make an audio recording of the meeting, which is used to produce the minutes, it would be very straightforward for us to put that out on the internet, so a member of the public could easily go onto the internet, and with a click, could listen to the meeting, could slide the bar through different portions of the meeting. And we could also put the presentations there that could be clicked on as well, so that you could see a PDF version of the presentations that were made tonight, at the same time that you're listening to Mr. Fraser's presentation, the council discussion, the vote, et cetera. So my thought was that that would be a way to quickly get at the issue of providing just more information to the public, while we make sure that we do, if you all choose to continue to look forward, that we do make a high-quality video presentation, that's council's desire, and escalated cost of that way. Or you could simply say that I've given staff that direction, and a flip phone's sufficient, and you can do that next week.
When you were talking with the other cities, the mess, how it counts, whatever it goes, is they, do you have an idea of like, how many people were watching it, and did they do it live, or was it taped, video taped there?
It's both, there's a few that do it live, and that's, that is a major expense, and most of them actually have their own booth, that's built into their facility, because you actually have to have somebody in the booth feeding it live, and putting in somebody's name, so as Mr. Fraser's up there, his name actually appears below him, and managing the feed as it's going out. We did not seriously look at doing that, because immediately, we recognized there was a lot of ongoing cross involvement in that. I didn't have the sense from you all that that was the issue as much as it is just putting it out there, so that people could see it after the fact. Then you have a lot of communities, like the one I mentioned, who have just quickened dirty, so to speak, and just put a camera in, and they just videotaped the meeting, and then they play it back, either on their website, or on their government access channel through the cable, which is what I was watching of the community I mentioned. I have, we have not seen, we've seen a couple that do it like I'm talking about, but it's a tape delay, but it's very high quality.
I think whatever we do, we need to have it reflected, the sense of doing things right, and looking good of what is presented in the public, got out more cheaply, and make a quick video, and just as you say, it can come off looking cheesy.
One more question, will we all have to wear makeup?
Yes.
The folks in the academy will be on the camera too, so they need to... Do you want any makeup, ours?
He must have gotten the unscathed.
Channel 2, I don't know, I must be guessing, but I was so sad about it, that I like to see citizens come to council meetings, and you know, invariably, they all, the place is empty, and the elected officials are up there, and there's something to be said for people coming to council meetings. I've just noticed the audience on here expectations with that group is pretty much fatal. They're just up there doing their business, and no one's in the audience, because maybe they're all at home watching it all through the air.
How many folks here tonight would rather have stayed home and watched this on television?
Yeah, one thing I do think that deserves discussion, I would even be inclined to move, I mean, I think there's support for this amongst council, that's the sense I get. I don't, I don't think that it would be necessary to wait for that fiscal year to do it, or direct staff to begin the process of doing it. From a monetary perspective, I mean, it's just moving money from one pocket to the other, from contingency fund into whatever capital expenditure we have into the, into the building, so we make budget procreations all the time, so I heard that as part of your recommendations. So I would move, we go ahead and direct staff to, I guess, maybe bring us options, or entrust you to make the best decision?
Well, we'd have to bring you a budget transfer, that then would, you know, capture, here's what we're going to spend the money on.
Right, yeah.
Could you also direct us to which ones you do think are of quality of what you're looking for? Is there a model that you want to...
Yeah, I don't know how we would get you to see that unless that community sent us a page that you could see it, because you can't just look at it on our own channel. But we can do that, so.
I'm wondering, is it where the money is spent, that we are doing it, and we're going to be pleased with, and I have a second kind of great recommendation, but is it really what we just put in the money?
Well, you also have to remember, it's going to be our first time trying, and so there's going to be some trial and error there, you know, to make sure that we get it right. And each, each community's different in terms of the way they're set up, some of them inherited video booths, others built video booths, I mean, they've had to do like we're talking about doing, and they've had to retrofit their facilities, so everybody's in a little bit different place in terms of how they go about doing it.
It gets too expensive, maybe we could sell some commercial airtime, it'd take a little three or four minute work to get it.
Well, I, I would move that we, we ask staff to, to go ahead and bring that, bring that to us.
Bring us the bottom line, though?
Well, yeah, I guess, bring us the, bring us the numbers and spare it out, I guess, I don't, obviously, you give me a difference between somebody, a man that's two hundred dollars a meeting and twenty-six hundred dollars a meeting. I know which way I'm going to put it.
Well, I, I, I do think it's important, you know, it's, uh, it's like the way we make pri, set priorities in our own lives. Uh, but sometimes, you know, when you're in a different community, you're just, you're, you're just running through the channels. Uh, sometimes you, you, you stop at a local televised meeting like this, and I don't, I just want, I, I think we want to create a, we, we don't want to come across, that's a polished bunch with the makeup and all. But we do want to come across as like, we are, uh, we're, we're not, we're not country Bucktons here, we don't know how to do this, huh?
What's the effort to reach all of us?
And if we set it up, if we cannot afford to set it up in a reasonable manner, then we ought to just, I think, just stop with the, the audio and the, uh, PowerPoints, if everybody can get all the information they need, they just don't get the face and the face. But I don't think we'd be judged on that, but I think if we start, if we start putting this on, uh, if, if we start putting this on, uh, videos, uh, we are going to be judged on quality.
On, on quality of the video?
The quality of the video.
It's what I see, yeah, but the quality of our governance. Yeah, but that's right, absolutely, that's what it's like.
He has, I mean, he has reflection on the commissioner, but it wasn't there. That's a nice way. But we want it to look, at least put together right, and not for rushing.
Your exposure.
We'll see, and I'm more, I'm more concerned about clearing out council chambers than ever having anybody, um, to build the city, tactics, that's my concern. I can go all the way through.
I, I would be curious too, to know the difference we can get between a two hundred dollar person and a twenty-six hundred dollar person.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, that is, I don't understand the difference in that range, it's such a wide range. I just, I, I would say that we'll just continue to do it, continue to explore and bring back.
Same folks.
Well, well, once they, in, in, in going through this process, uh, the cost to televise New York City council meetings is not going to be, uh, I can't see why that would be more expensive than, than televising out. In other words, what I'm saying is, we could find somebody who's really spent the bucks, and find out how many bucks that is. And then, and then we've got to determine, you know, how we translate that to what we really want. The, the point I was making is, uh, what is, what would be involved in televising, uh, Charlotte, Raleigh, New York City, whatever, that wouldn't be involved in televising out? Same thing, right, same principle, same magnitude? So we should be able to get a handle on the number, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that you necessarily get that from another community as much as you get it from talking to the vendors who can tell you what it would take to do it here. And then, and then you, you, you tell them, well, we want something similar to what they're doing in Morganton, or, or Charlotte, or whatever, whatever, and that's okay, but just not that one local. Which, we're, I mean, we've already had those conversations, we haven't gotten to point of asking for specific bids yet, going through that, we've had, you know, people come in, look at our studies, talk to us about it, and that's kind of where we are with it.
How, how quick could we get the audio part, uh, in line, with what you talked about on our website with the presentation, how quick could we be there?
Oh, I mean, we could put it out there this week for this meeting.
I would propose that we, we get on that as soon as we're quick, because I mean, that seems like something simple that we could do to get started.
All right, so I've got a motion to, to ask them to bring something back that we can sign off on as a budget amendment and begin the process. Now, I don't think there's any, uh, super urgency to it in terms of, you know, that we should work loads dramatically, um, to accomplish it.
Let's finish up, it's your motion, then we'll take our questions again.
Yeah, 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 that'd be good.
We got a motion?
Second.
Second by, motion by Mr. Leo, second, or Mr. Seaver, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, get you down.
And my motion would be that we, as soon as possible, go ahead with the audio portion and put it on our website, any presentations, and, and any enhancements that we can go off with the audio until we can make a decision on it.
Now, we can track back.
How many hits you get?
And track what gets up.
Yes, oh, yeah, I mean, and that might be a, you know, personally, be a good determination, you know, who's really in.
Do I get two votes or one, if I don't know?
It may, it may help us determine where we're at.
I think the mayor's wife would be really interested in it.
Well, aware how many people would be hanging up come and ask for the pay?
Well, they wouldn't have to come and ask.
Oh, but, oh, okay.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to, they would just be on the west side.
Oh, current.
Oh, it's rare, every, every once in a while, someone will ask for one.
I think it's a good idea.
I think I would ask for maybe two, maybe.
If we know immediately about how many people are watching with the audio, that would give us an idea of what future topics we'd be on.
So we got a motion with Mr. Gess, and a second by Ms. Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, get you down. Any appointments? Mr. Moon has requested to be heard on the subject, uh, subject panel on the Jeff.
I know you're all targeting a guest. Thank you, thank you. Uh, plus man, twenty-nine, twenty-five, eighty-six, four, please, take your seat, you're in. As one of the more vocal advocates for having public comments placed officially on the agenda, as well as prior to any council action items, uh, I want to commend the city council tonight for its action in that regard. If I could give you one of those little beautiful glass awards for government well crafted tonight, I would give it to you, because I think you've acted in a very responsible and a prudent man for the good of the community. Previously, we have all stated, including citizens, myself, and up in you all, our agreement in having citizen input available for the council votes on agenda items, that that is a positive step, and one that makes it more likely that you, our elected leaders, will gain insights for more informed decisions as you govern. Formally adding this to the public agenda simply ensures that such citizen input will now be received in a consistent and orderly manner, not subject to being inadvertently or purposefully left out by whomever chairs a council meeting on a given night. While the sum of the step may appear to be of minor importance, I respectfully suggest that any time representative government is made more open and accountable to those represented, it strengthens not just the government, but the whole community as well by building greater trust. And that would be true, in my opinion, with the video as well. It's not about so many hits, it's about building trust in community and the availability for your citizens. Trust is the linchpin upon which representative democracy depends always. As I've said before, what you are doing in this action and by moving forward on video recording council meetings are positive examples of how Hickory will succeed in creating life well crafted by also creating government well crafted. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my commendation for getting that done.
Uh, any matters not on the agenda? General comment?
I have one, uh, I had the pleasure this past Saturday of attending the Elks Club, what they call Americanism Recognition Center for Mayor. And, uh, they not only recognize military posts and some of our, now, I'll mention those in a minute, but they also recognize some students, and one of the six, seven, and eighth graders from Grandview. There were six, uh, students present, and they had to write an essay, and the title of their essay was, "What Does a National Anthem Mean to Me?" And there were six, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from Grandview that stood up and read their essays. And if you would have heard them, you would have been just as proud of them as I would, and as their parents were. So those six students from Grandview, along with Dr. Howerton, who is the principal there, were present, and, and received the award for exceptional students in our community. Along with that, they gave out two awards, which our city employees have recognized. The two thousand and thirteen Exceptional Firefighter of the Year was Marty Knup, and the two thousand and thirteen Exceptional Police Officer of the Year was Master Police Officer Lance Bean. Uh, they also recognized someone from each of the, uh, four branches of military service, so, uh, it was, it was a real, good event, and I thank Mr. Mayor for allowing me to attend that.
Well, thank you very much for filling in. Do you have the names of the six, uh, students?
Yes, I do.
If you could, read those in the minutes too.
It was Jackson, Graham, all of these are from Grandview Middle School, these are sixth grade students, Jackson, Graham, Hunter Clayton, Maya Hopper, and the seventh and eighth grade students were Grace Little, Katie Bashron, and Madison Smithy. And, and, uh, Ms. Howerton, or Dr. Howerton, I'm sorry, Dr. Howerton was there also representing Grandview School.
Would you, would you be willing to call Mrs. Howerton and tell her that their names are, get read in the minutes?
Sure.
And they can access it, they can, if they want to.
So you're watching on TV?
When I was growing up, Officer Fowler was taking care of me, I didn't, I didn't get my name in the minutes of the city council meetings.
I was there, huh?
This is the tough part, I, you know, I hope everybody understands that we, we do have levity here, and I think it doesn't hurt our garden thing, and, uh, and yet we take our jobs, I think, very seriously. Couple of things, uh, we had the Our State Magazine feature Hickory this month, we're very proud of the article. We think it captures a whole lot of, of, uh, of what Hickory's about, and we're very proud that Mr. Brady Dennis, local boy, graduated with my son, Pulitzer Prize winner, worked for the Washington Post, wrote, was chosen to write the article, and we are, I think we're very fortunate. And another community in the state that has been, uh, hit by manufacturing job losses about like we have, recently, I didn't think, got nearly the good article out of it that, uh, that Brady did for us. Uh, the next meet, next council meeting is the fifth, and I don't want to name drop, but Governor McCrory has asked that the metropolitan merit mayors meet with him, and I think that will be good for us to be represented at that meeting. So I'm going to miss both the inspiring spaces meeting, which I regret very much, and the council meeting, but I know we're in good hands with Mr. Gess, our mayor, bringing in. The Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation met here this morning, met at Rock Barn, and they, uh, asked me to welcome them there, I didn't tell them that that's not in Hickory, I, I don't know if they have that right. To Greater Hickory, yeah, and the, uh, but the chairman of the board is a PH, has a PhD from Virginia Tech, and the, uh, chief executive officer has a PhD from Virginia Tech. And I told them I got my BGT from Virginia Tech, which stands for barely got through, but, uh, uh, great time, we started off the meeting with Mahogany Popeye, and, but I did want you to know. The reason I brought this up. The reason I wanted to mention that honestly is, the CEO led off with, said, "We, we are so proud of these wonderful communities that we have near the Parkway." And today, we're meeting, she said, in Hickory, and I was just so proud of that they recognized us for that. And, uh, also gave me a chance to ask them, to tell them that we promote the Parkway, we promote the golf tournaments. They say, "Come to the golf tournaments, let me see the leaves at the Blue Ridge Parkway." And I asked them to promote us, and they promote Parkway, so we'll see what happens. It's just really great tonight to listen to all of these good things, and, and you wonder, why, why does some people say there's nothing to do? You hear about the things to do downtown, at the Salt Block Arts and Science Center, uh, it's just fantastic. Crowded, it's opening season shortly, Greater Hickory Classic is back, one that you may not have heard about, but I think you might be interested in. Carmike Cinema is going to open this summer, a five hundred seat, seventy foot, high definition movie theater. And I would say with all of that, if you can't find something to do, you're not looking very hard. All you have to do is check the Hickory Daily Record, the Buzz, and, uh, and you can find plenty of things to do.
Polar Fun Saturday.
High.
Polar Fun Saturday.
Polar Fun Saturday, are you jumping?
Yes, he is.
Chief Captain jumping?
No, he's not.
Has he ever?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can you help us with that?
Well, I think what you want me to say is I'll jump if he'll jump.
We have money.
So I'm not going to give up. If that's what it takes, it ain't going to happen. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I want to say one more thing, uh, we heard tonight that Juan is one of our former Hickory High School graduates and PCL member and former scholar. He's working in the White House, he's helping write policy right now, Andrew Carroll.
Great, okay. He lists surprises, working in the White House, all in favor, say aye, all opposed, no?